... And um I was with a bunch of colleagues, I was with a bunch of the National Department of Commerce. And but you were sort of in crazy problems and then can't be fired because that one friend that she had, that's a problem, you know, it's a sign of all of them. Um, here's the deal, and so uh, uh, I'm doing time, but it was uh, I think one perspective I can bring is how important uh, we get on the planning of companies, dialogue, building and which that came out, uh, probably speaking to help. And um, and also just my, I think that for navigating uh, the city combined, I've heard a while, we wanted to such as, who like that is also navigating, uh, what that's been playing, so she can actually pass this. Those would be some, and you'll
Well, thank you for sharing, and I'm glad that you recovered well. Just to know a little bit about the planning commission, so the Harrisburg Planning Commission was established and continue pursuant to the Metropolitan Municipalities Planning Code. Pursuant to section seven, action one, zero, three point two, the qualified ordinances, the commission shall be comprised of seven members to be appointed by the mayor with the advising consent of the city council, and the term of each member shall be for four years or until a qualified successor is appointed. Section seven, hash one, zero, three, the qualified ordinances also provides that no more than two commissioners shall be reappointed or replaced within any calendar year. The mayor of the city of Harrisburg is appointed Mr. Joseph Francis Ben Lucio, a third year expired. The third on Harrisburg Planning Commission is the secret, we have a fabulous fashion brand who has been appointed to serve in an original for the term that was set to expire on October twenty seventh, two thousand and eighteen. All members of the planning commission shall be residents of the city of Harrisburg, and those five members that get admission shall be civic members and shall not be officers or employees of the city of Harrisburg, please mark in the book. This time I'll open the board to factors from my colleagues, I'll be playing with Councilman Lawson, any questions?
Uh, first, Mr. Ken Lucio. First of all, thank you for um, being counsel for my fellow citizens of the city, so, thank you very much. Okay, here's the board for them. Um, my question actually was answered, I wanted to know what's sparked your interest in planning, um, being on the board because uh, it is a very important board, and you've tried to sell very well, I'm glad you're doing great, I'm glad that you feel well, and also that that experience made me want to get part of the, you know, board in the city, so, um, thank you, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lawson.
Thank you, President Flowers, and Mr. Penn, I'm with you. Alright, thank you, yeah, alright, so, my, my question was asked and answered, and I, and the question was, what makes you want to do this meeting? This thing, that I could not have been present, though, you know, just with your personal experience, and uh, enthusiasm that you put towards coming onto this board, and looking at it, really want to make a tangible difference. So I'm, I'm thanking for putting your name in the hat, thinking something in front of us, and um, we were looking, I recall, we've been moving
Thank you, Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you, President Flowers, good evening, Mr. Ken Lucio. Yeah, right, um, thank you for your willingness to fair, first of all, um, I know that, that it takes a lot of time to be able to plan a mission, um, it takes some dedication, so thank you for it, they love it, definitely do that, uh, in terms of city and this capacity. Um, the one question that I had was already asked, whatever, I thought a different one, I think things kind of switched up a little bit. Uh, as a member of the planning commission, uh, one thing that we always try to do is balance the input of the community with the requirements of the building building. So how will you uh, make sure that the voice of the residents and the community is always kept in forefront as you make the
I think so, yeah, very good question, um, so, I feel like, if I had like a guy in control for our, for things that move through the commission, part of Toronto, um, you have to, I imagine I would have to prepare very carefully to understand the people that are out there, whatever the request is, and then, he, I think probably most important part of it is keeping very listening, making time, planning when the meeting has been, the person who made the request, obviously, and prepare, that's a lot of attention. That's what they're saying, obviously, then what else, we, we, that would have been well, and um, then, I guess, in concert with the other members of the committee, um, liberty, and maybe, I'd say, you know, in a sensible way, they didn't apply anyone else to the agency in the press, we are very, then you know, other unions, meaning, um, if they had assumed the question, people that gave the, that's what I'm saying, I, um, but I mean, besides, I, I mean, I believe the community, like, you know, concerns and agents and the rules and laws that people find, and then also, um, it's obviously, like, definitely
Thank you very much, uh, for that response, uh, it's great to hear that you would do the research beforehand, uh, one thing I would just kind of add to that is make sure you do the research in the community, like, go out and visit the site, people look like, see, you know, the character of the neighborhood, something like that. Um, because unfortunately, you don't always get, so what I have to mean, um, because the advertising requirements, only like a hundred people of the property or something like that, or sort of nothing more than that, but the advertising department's not entirely at large, so um, doing that research beforehand by actually going off this league, so you can see what the community sites, see what things are, and uh, totally put a form store there, believe they're, or form stores, you know, around the same area, regardless of things working, so that we probably kind of have that perspective as well. Um, that's it, but, thank you for your willingness to serve, uh, if you're able to serve this word on it for the thing left for the meeting, I'll start by putting that with that. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Major, any questions?
Uh, thank you, uh, thank you for your willingness to serve, uh, this last president created, who, they say under, uh, what was, same line, I'm thinking, where else to put the question, did I, uh, but there was, either, before the term, rest day, and qualification, uh, can you just need to, a little bit, kind of about people involved that you have with uh, the Harrisburg, uh, for decisions, or, um, any, uh, interest?
Uh, yeah, sure, um, so I, uh, I have, um, yeah, I've been, so, I mentioned, I've been leading Harrisburg since, uh, kind of twenty thirteen, I've been, I was a county, I'm a person, uh, I, I've been in the city, so I've been, um, involved in some of the local museums, and so on, and I've been, and um, some of the other, uh, events they put on, so I've seen the trends, and, um, I've, and their trends, um, I've done a bit of actually, I know, so, like, they're looking up, um, and uh, I haven't, I haven't been on any of the, uh, any of the, like, office um, I, besides that, just, uh, basically, give me, work for me, actually. Very much, honestly.
Alright, alright, yeah, uh, just to, yeah, uh, during all this work, especially to get a better sense of, of what's going on around the city, uh, so we're, this is important, we're, uh, starting to serve to, you know, that trial, and relatively, well, uh, and had, that's some of the decisions that are difficult for you to handle, um, you have a very, uh, first, uh, city, so, just want to make sure that, that all the resident impacted um, and had the investments, they can work out as they're making the decisions, and how this is going to those, and the, or, they cannot cause other residents to and we can, we are, uh, you know, the business that we pay, at water, and that, that's where the residents, you know, sitting in that, you know, city hall, but those that are, because they're a deep passion, and that we have a very good board, and it's much, we're going to, of course, thank you, thank you, uh,
Thank you. Councilman Daniels, any questions?
Um, fine, um, I don't anticipate you having time, that's a, yes, see, but, um, but, yes, see, but are there any other areas that, that's, um, this wrong?
None that I, that I would know of, no.
Thank you, Councilman Robinson, any questions?
Thank you, Madam President, uh, thank you, uh, for wanting to, um, now to be here, but certainly, this is the best of the whole commission. Uh, now, Mr. um, Jeffrey is doing a, you know, job, so would you feel, uh, as far as improvement that you can feel, including towards the planning commission, or?
Um, yeah, so, you know, appreciate you too much about how I do, people think, definitely, anything like that, and I know, I don't know if you want to um, I, I have seen, and I remember the time when it happened, you know, for the hour, um, with the plans, and, and definitely developed quite a commission, and, uh, by the other state boards, and so I, I'd also just be, for the work of, uh, of, of kind of, you know, management, of valuable goals, and, um, yeah, I, as far as improvements, I feel like I have need some, uh, just full, so those, uh, advance, uh, like, in, in, that, of those processes, and, but, these are, I do that in a lot, and
Thank you, Stan, um, hey, congratulations, you're going home now, five years. I mean, um, wouldn't that be, that, uh, imagine something, so you mentioned, uh, benefits, but what experience have you had with our, or any of the city population, the exception required, very specific?
So, you know, yeah, just like, we, I when I was, I, I mentioned, it's a lot of compliance, uh, on the, on the, I think, having meetings in, as far as like organizations, they're doing, uh, things, uh, I don't, I, I don't have, uh, any, your experience, but, I, I know they've been putting in, you know, it's like, all the contracts, about my legal, they, 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 um, any such things, name, across industry, interior, fully, and that even requires, I mean, I don't, I don't really, really, I don't, I don't, but, bringing back to by all, I think, I've seen other kind of improvements happening in my time, in my reading, and, um, and I think that any time there's a chance to be, uh, of this organization, I can rather, uh, mention, uh, that, and take it serious to that, that, that.
Um, well, thank you for getting answers, and joining us this evening, I don't have any questions, Pam.
Thank you, any other additional questions? Good evening, and thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you all.
I'm moved to add resolution forty-nine, two thousand and twenty-three, to our next legislative session agenda. This concludes the work of the administration committee, we'll now move to the budget finance committee. An overview of bill five, two thousand and twenty-three. We'll refer to our chair, Vice President Green.
Thank you, President Flowers, uh, bill five, twenty twenty-three, in accordance with appropriate American investment plan and our funding from the United States Department of Treasury and authorized certain standards of such funds. Um, this is on the agenda tonight, I was off the body a couple of weeks ago, and it will be on the agenda, the legislative agenda next week, uh, hopefully for a vote tonight, just kind of talk about the forward process, and seeing, namely, how the council numbers have any questions, comments, or any follow-up information, uh, that they will ask before we move on to the legislative session. So, um, I've talked to some of my council members, kind of, about the amendments, or if there wasn't that process, one thing, they may not repeat any of the, uh, bill. Um, if anyone has anything, we might decide tonight, I will do that for after this, uh, next week, we will in the long-term agenda for actual vote, we will, uh, have the opportunity to make amendments for a vote, so if anyone would have any amendments, see, like, mainly, we present those amendments, have a vote for those amendments, and then we forward them to our leadership. So, I just kind of like, give an overview, knowing where we were at, uh, if there is anyone here who has any comments, questions, or if anything, that they need to follow up on, I know there is some information that was discussed two weeks ago, um, it's probably the fault in the administration, and I'm not going to see uh, the, Mr. Jared here did send out an email today, uh, just following up on that, asking for that information to give us, or to make a strong decision on, or commitments that we need. Uh, so I'm going to spark my fire right here, look down to the, one of y'all, if you have any questions, you can start it, though.
Thank you, Vice President Green, um, I, I'm still waiting for the information back from the administration, but I know we are going to make a informed decision, I think my biggest thing, more of a comment is that they know you're going towards a pool, um, I think I just want to make sure we have, I would like to be a part of, in, eating what you have each day, and make on the, the, the money that's going through the, the pools, and those strategies, will help found, but, um, I don't know, maybe it's not just a spray bar, I think, if that's maybe, or maybe I won't say the baby, but a smaller area, it can be a spray bar, it can be a spray bar. But I think just going forward, just making sure that we, and then, we need, uh, you know, if that's getting approved, you know, such
That's, thank you. Um, and I will make sure that I do that to the administration, that, as we move forward, uh, even after the five, this, after some point, as we move forward, that the department chairs are included in the process afterwards. Um, understanding that this is only one step in the process, um, that most funds are allocated, and there's a whole process that comes to playing, um, actually, design of, there is plenty of, before the thought, it's a very bad part, however we want to, um, describe it, that there's an entire planning process, creating that, and each one that comes to, and our, our chair um, is involved in that process, as well as for each, um, portion of the American, and like, that afterwards, were involved in that process, and that, uh, the chair, or possibly, getting updates, and also as well as the public, so they were informed of it, it's a process, so. Yes, thank you.
I'm sure, just keep it in context about which, and I'm not sure his experience or not review. Um, one, all the structural services, owners have to best be qualified, so, so, the, the, during, during, in the, in the, uh, the did not, not, the, the, of, it is, so, when the approval is on, that's supposed to be the question, but that's really going to be the home, and pronounced, and then it will be the whole house, the decision. Um, that's how that comes into the policy. Not counting that there's other processes. If you do this, there isn't. As it was forward, reminding you that we're going to be covered by December thirty one point on words. And if I consider it very well. So we'll be a lot of words. We will create a point for. And it's not just a big. So we'll be out there in the next. Before you are.
No, thank you, Mr. President. I think that does bring me some reaction, but I do know that, that they will come to front of us. I think I want to be at the meeting that they have before him.
There is a little role. And your, your people contract themselves. And then vote, right, that's the county department.
No, I don't want to, yeah, just know who they're speaking with, but I feel like sometimes, uh, you get, well, we always are going to give a person that they said that to the front of them, which is fine. But I just want to hear about the other people so then I know what that beyond them. Okay, there were other, you know, actions in the, you know, some of the things they offered or didn't, but I think it helps us to get the decision even better. Or we just need time and the data.
For sport and your mom and all already into the manual school. Right, next by one process.
And what options are, um, I think a big part of it is, um, when you put information out there, who's responsible, right? It's a process for developing what's out there. So, um, in other words, if I didn't ask for people to give me a design, it's pretty hard. All you can do is try to. Whereas if it's designed for a school attached or something like that, then it was responsible back. So I think it should be part of that. Making sure that what's being requested is, um, consistent with the discussion for that.
Finally, this is one of the stars. The level of raising the, the problem of amendments. Simply where the person want one design, it's one of you are one thing, but it's an explanation. I'm playing the past one more time. But I've been thinking too. So if you want to borrow their problems, not like me.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it. Councilwoman Austin.
And they've gone saying, I think, yeah, how, yeah, in conversation. My, my goal is to make sure that the money comes through and we are supporting our local business and also working in um, workforce development within the money that it's been spent. And don't know if there's a way we can create a, a rating metric, um, for awarding contracts for our diverse business and, um, I don't, I don't want something that's going to prevent us moving forward. Sorry, I, I just think, uh, I've been put together a any type of ordinance, we're going to bound that, so I don't want to see it. Box ourselves in a corner, but I also want to make sure that, um, we are giving these businesses their shit when they what they, for the five of these, uh, bids, then, um, how do we ensure that we know that we are making sure that these businesses are, are able to come to the table and be bigger? But I also want to box the same, if we don't have the capacity for one of these, and the end of the job.
Mark, nice being made impressed of. Quite an interview. This is the goal, what the goal is for everybody to look at. Thank you.
President Barron. Thank you, Vice President Green, for clarifying expectations for next Tuesday. I think that's helpful for council members of their directors, the initiatives, and the public who may need to mean. Um, I did have, um, two questions. One regarding the tree growing program and then, um, one relating to a request we received from the Harris for redevelopment authority that began with the trees. And this was, or these questions were received from a resident the, uh, the city council place location. Uh, the request wants to require the city arborists and parks directors to provide a map right now by year the number of trees in each neighborhood that the city has planted for the past five years, plus a ten year projection by neighborhood going forward. And I guess I should begin with, um, if this information or data is not available, if the arborist and or parks director could let us know that would be helpful. Require the city arborist and parks director to provide a detailed report of residents' requests for tree service over the last five years, including calls from residents with ancient trees located on private property. After review of number one and number two, and show off the neighborhoods who have received the least amount of tree service in the last five years, receive priority for often funding tree services. That aside, are the money to assist residents, giving priority to residents and neighborhoods that the arborists and parks department have completed over the last five years to provide service for repair of sidewalks, water and sewer lines, and shot through damage to homes caused by overgrown tree roots. Provide reimbursement funds to residents to incur costs for tree cutting, removal, and sidewalk or linear services for trees that are under the exclusive custody and control of the city. Finally replenish the funds taken from the municipal fund to pay salaries that shouldn't have been paid using general funds. The examples are the arborist sustainability coordinator. So those are my questions regarding our shooting. Next, I wanted to in fact, I want to mention the ask of the Harris for redevelopment authority. It is for a food accelerator and health facility. I'll just briefly read some of the letter. The redevelopment authority in the city of Harrisburg is a coalition of urban agricultural growers and urban food development stakeholders known as the local food, local food city HBG. This coalition originated by the EPA and U S senior local food, local places, technical safety grant, the tackle food development and access in South Allison Hill and throughout the city of Harrisburg. The L F L P H B G coalition includes urban agricultural producers like the bridge, eco village, city farm, law art, and Joshua water and become a hobby. Um, the lobby, it's not a promise and the soul provided upon. Public and private stakeholders including city planning, parks integration, health, agricultural waters, central area food bank, and some health trying counting, meaning the action of residents. L F L P H B G has four main strategies with the first being a food accelerator. Um, the food accelerator of the multi fast food facility for fresh food adaptation and distribution. Year round farmer's market, commercial kitchen incubator, chef and cuisine, education venue, food truck, commissary, and food vendor storage, among other food developments. At the close site, this is Coca Cola building located at two twenty seven South Seventeenth Street in South Allison Hill. The project requires funding from several sources and the White Council to consider nine hundred thousand dollars of art grants for the purchase of that facility, the retrofit for the operation that will boost urban food development and community access. I'm curious if Mr. Ryan Davis, the executive director of the Harris for redevelopment authority, would join us next week to answer any questions, not to be opposed. That concludes my, my question. Thank you.
Thank you, President Barron. Councilman Major.
Thank you. Uh, one question I have is for solicitor. Terms of helping for other funding. Most special, especially with appetizing for the market. What we have to keep appetizing, so it's good. Wanted, I should have been funding priorities with the, in the bill. Uh, and then two, if we were to go above threshold, but I'm just bad for that. It's falling down, so I guess since you were probably going to go down.
I would hope that I see, I would. Just with your part two, but turn here. Council will be watching that. That they don't have. And then, and then upon extension. At my speed. But I, I know that it's still a matter. We just want this, the state of the law, additional federal law, and that it's not a specific thing. So they've given just five, two. By, um, technically, I'm just saying, it was all a double project. Right now, or, um, the, 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 the protection. When acres, you almost said, on, it would be one, 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 first one. And, uh, as much as I said. So, uh, I, I, I okay, yeah, soon we got it. I thought there's, there are other proposals we had, maybe it is that bullshit that the city is recruiting. Now, uh, it's time to open again for events to, 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 to priority of businesses. Um, you know, if you want to see what's in the, uh, funding, but then what was allocated by, except for lockdown. I just wanted to ensure that it's worth, for making changes, we don't and we additional significant, and you don't relate the process. We all, I want to, you know, take all of our ten seconds to, you know, all of this for the names, our visuals, starting, I don't say, also ask. If you're moving related history, people ask that. Uh, they, they do not.
And there, Councilman Davis.
I have some questions. The first one is, I just put my, I mean, the, um, sorry.
Project versus the establishment of the community center. For not only just the maintenance of the building itself, but of the whole. The projects are designed in a way to, although it's all in the family. Again, we totally project it, we roll home, simple roll home design. Uh, that is for up and down six street there. Uh, and overall, the applicants have done a really good job of coordinating both with the planning bureau or the time. Of the project, they're also coordinating their commission and meeting a lot of the comments that they noted. Putting we, uh, applications that have received this, uh, development. From a, uh, from a, from our industry perspective, as I noted, these things are all currently being lost. Um, but of course, uh, being that they're, you know, located here in the city, they were a long time developed. Uh, so it's not like it's a particular ring like that. Um, uh, Pepperidge Water has done their review and provided a review of the project. Um, and it's fairly short, um, view, so they don't have a lot of comments. Uh, technical issues and some of the limitation. Um, and overall, you know, the applicants have done a good job of being public and then, uh, owner of the barber shop has located. Uh, holding the sites three or four, uh, projects, uh, getting come to the last point of the mission they made. Uh, especially in the end, it sounds like a lot of, uh, issues and questions they had on every style project. Uh, maybe be addressed, uh, both were in the process. With that all being said, uh, the planning commission has recommended that the, uh, must be approved with the following missions. Uh, the applicants require us to raise the tip of all missions. After well, one on one, well, total housing participation by according to box solid. Uh, as noted, uh, the units will be, uh, one hundred thirty units are affordable. Uh, so that again, there are some, uh, some of the house. Uh, the applicants we coordinated with the department of works to work to go earn the appropriate side of the issue representation on the same. Use, um, you know, I'm not exactly sure what goes anybody, it's similar. Yes, we will be, you know, on all the units on the site. Addressed, uh, or or W, uh, and you signed related to the residential committee, said the comments about the quoting departments. Yeah, for the third world hours. Plus, as necessary, work and courage to be that even basically. Have with signing on handsets. Uh, applicants, uh, in that signage, yeah. And, uh, finally, my bureau remembers the interest part of the project since, especially the building one, uh, shown by longies. Uh, building one is, um, say along at office and higher than blocks to add to them against being sent on. Uh, so we then will have a few days, uh, our generation where that, uh, can break down. Planning the mission had recommended that the city constantly keep questioning all reasons. Post development will help make it possible that the department, the company, which have really. Or go home, start a development that's have. It could, uh, the mass incentive of the post development. Those five most could be available as a vital issue. And finally, the proposal, I mean, that we should, I mean, that's trying to be like this.
Thank you. Now, and after the afternoon with night, and now, if this means so. Um, give us a brief description of the project, uh, including time frame, sort of destruction, where you are.
Absolutely. Uh, finally, the town leaders, not with the units, they're representing by capital this year. Uh, Ryan Sanders, who's supposed to be here this evening at the last minute, taking it to the bottom of his pack. We will appreciate, uh, the great work from Mr. Knight, actually, to take the time to see the council. I do have some packets far earlier than what I'm gonna, that's why I've been getting referred to as passive now, but. Something this group is possible, uh, just to kind of middle for us to be honest. Um, I just like essentially, they from a tax, like a price, prior, you know. Prior to the council, uh, we have been working with, uh, plan bureau, uh, day one. Uh, has been important housing project, they want to get a state party approval. That goes by the end of year on that, so we're looking to consider. The, you know, there is, uh, have all of our use for the two most important plans, not the government, our metro side, we believe they're. Uh, and also working with a general contractor, they want to, the property, uh, add together. The agent base, we will take whatever money you can spend. Uh, so this is, it's a pretty project at this point. I'll give you a very brief tour. As Mr. Mike said, we're in the email, the block they're pointing from, sorry, the intersection of Sixth and Emerald. On this plan, if you don't have in front of you, kind of a topic, this is going on quickly. For six three, right, and we'll just go from south and down the planet. Um, there are four lots, they're consolidated to one, they're boxing before. Um, lot one being fifteen existing lots, so we're consolidating one, that's on the. Fourth, east side of notice six, the largest building. Lot two is directly across the street from lot one, um, that's the smaller building there, and that is three, four, five, that will consolidate into one. Lot three is directly across Emerald, it's on the southwest corner of Emerald Six, that's, um, kind of a medium sized building there. And those are eight lots that we consolidated one. And then the last slot, the last, uh, the third lot is, this is a key track, it's a thing of a lot next to the barber shop. Probably with that strategy. Let's do this quickly. A lot, well, I'm again, we're gonna consolidate fifteen lots of the one, we're gonna build, uh, like a little housing, we can say. Three of which will be ADA accessible, put me on the first floor. Building itself is going to be constructed as much as we can as a simple building, but it's gonna have the look and our style of age. That attic, I'll have a random up here, but I'll have a look of, uh, in the townhouse. If these units is gonna have its own public access from the street, uh, the center. And it's probably around the community. Um, it also prefers on these, on these, that the H and A requirement, uh, both wanted to kind of pick up some of the field of work. Um, blocks in there now. A lot one, we're gonna build twenty one new service parking stations off of where the book is now, so we can use some of six street. Um, three of those spaces will be ADA acceptable. Building itself is gonna be a mix of doing three stories, so we can build some of the renderings, or comparative device, like that, or raging, whatnot. Uh, these will be also be in the mix of wanting to do better. Well, um, each of the units for all four lots, uh, anything ranging from eight hundred and forty five square feet to about a hundred square feet. So, we're bigger than one location that there's wires and that would, um, and any kind of. If it's set more of a market rate field than traditional portable housing. Um, as I said, on these individual, uh, entities. Um, who else is on this one? A whole, um, whole development will be in the mix of one, two, and three. Three batteries should be two levels, competitive or the four. Uh, two are a mix of semi-four, and I don't know how I'm going to do this. Uh, ones are also kind of mixed, that's all kind of, it's a long building, that's all on that, but that's what I call three batteries. Kind of everything spread out, that's all based on the H and A requirements. Um, each of the first four units, all of the lots, they'll be what they consider ADA visible. So, an access, they go there, an access, um, we have, um. Again, on lot one, three of those units will be habitable, so the entire, uh, unit setup or ADA accessibility. The fact that we can specify each place and stuff like that, feels a little bit, like, that we could run for, I mean, it. One, two, so lot here, lot two, uh, directly across on six three. Now, consists of eight units, again, it's the next two, two story, uh, building. I'd rather follow that, this will be a mix of, uh, one, two, and three batteries, they're all new, eight batteries proposed here. And we are not building any, um, surface parking station, uh, off the parking station, in particular. But one thing I do want to mention is that we're in the mix of peripheral, uh. peripheral neighborhood and Yan and RN Richards. Yan has no requirement for parking, uh, the RN has, we're gonna have the advantage of the, uh, importantly, how we can credit for providing. Half of our states, that we can make the benefit of these coordinates, people are visiting. Uh, which is on lot, uh, three, uh, so we have these spaces over there. Uh, lot two, we're gonna have the advantage of, uh, existing off-street park, a lot of people. That was, uh, an attempt to try to piece more green space around that block and around that building, put the vision to pass that on, that, and Adams. Lot three is a block, uh, final street, that'll be the end units, again, a mix of pooling, pretty sore, uh, rooms, those are all wonderful. Uh, and that's. There's two acceptable units in that particular building, and then there's two waiting rooms without that. Uh, we did have a apartment back yard, which was mostly the backyard, uh, created some, um. Very, um. Unwanted pedestrian and manipular access, uh, projects, so we're with the planning bureaus to eliminate that. Five space lot, knocked it down to a two space lot, that's full on the alley, Turner Alley. Made any type of blur and pedestrian conflict along six three, kind of size that six. Uh, pedestrian corridor. The other thing we're gonna do along six three is, uh, the city came in and rebuilt some of the sidewalks that were. Public sidewalk, there are a couple sidewalks where, uh, sidewalk is not full with sidewalks, so it's a classic. In kind of lot, um, three and four, names and full with sidewalk there, like, side, that would say. Three and the side that borders there already. Lot four, which is the last one on the right of that plan, is a two, or I'm sorry, four unit block, there's two buildings. Uh, that'll be two stories to match the barber shop, like, and a lot of those are accessible, will have four parking stations on the back. Uh, except for then from Turner Alley. Um, as, and I mentioned, you are proposing, uh, few neutralized management facilities, there's a neutralized basin essentially under the parking lots and portion of the lawn. Um, we have anything to do with CRW, uh, we've been through the town conservation district, we've got our NDS school, these, you know. Uh, we did just very minor, and they were throwing broad eyes and cross teeth, I don't know, I gotta be last week, uh, work, we're, we're in town. So nothing really second impact, but you are trying to, you are part of all the trauma already.
Uh, thank you. So, just, um, one question, the. The affordability conditions and the financing, for how many years are they?
Great question, that'd be better answered by Ryan Sanders, and I apologize again for not being here, but I don't recall how long. I, I don't want to mistake it, ten years, not like twenty five, really.
Yeah, and, um, the, these are all red goals, and I'm assuming because of the law conservation and so, and this is big. The party for modern show.
Um, got one, no.
That's for me, I'll open it in the morning, I'll start every company, uh, first of all.
Thank you, how woman, um, being, uh, my first question, it is putting in savings somewhere and outside every day to figure out what it needs. What's three J and?
That is initials of grandparents of the farm board.
Thank you.
Um, my other question, my, for the day, that's, I'm gonna, and, they're doing a really fine or once. And, um, if you could get back to them, like, you know, what's with this, like, something. Horrible, and what is coming back to that. Um, they talked about area of accessibility, which that was, so I see not all of them are, there are a few.
All the first four units are accessible.
Right, who need, um, who need other buildings? I think there were two buildings where parking is acceptable units, I related with the.
I'm not sure.
But there were like, uh, I forget, on Emerald Street, uh, that one isn't acceptable. Like on second day.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, uh, lot one has three, they already has three, right, there, uh, we'll call it habitable at this point. Uh, lot two doesn't have any, uh, lot, uh, three, I actually think has. Okay, and then lot four doesn't have any. H and A, H and A says, that's standard, standard for accessibility, uh, some of the states that we were trying to get for, uh, fully acceptable. You know, I will say that one of the units, um, is not the traditional, uh, accessible. Uh, I don't know, stereotype or, um, but it's weird, they're, um, different as well, so there are different things, um. Visual things, things set up inside the building, uh, for that as well.
Okay, and it's been mine.
We have one, three, and lot one.
And then we'll, there'll be one that we should, you know, maybe, oh, yeah. Or somebody had to. And none of it was a home. I don't, I don't think it's someone apart.
Of their own apartments, it was all multiple times as well, um, but if you go to the group of the renderings, um, they tend to give, try to give it up to theirs. Where the parents now, now has to, then, um, then apartment, like the traditional apartment building. Yeah, so at the back of that attic, there are elevation, we have our, and so we talk that, we think they're, you know. Our idea of one is they're throwing some of like.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah, I just didn't understand you were saying, so we're gonna be townhouse, we'll be some apartment. How should I, I was that, even up to now, you see. Okay, I think that, um, that's it for me, thank you.
Thing, one, one question that I, I have is. They aren't, being accessible but not habitable to me. Uh, would we see that, uh, like, let's say the doorway or like that, or is that something that. Someone who has no more, are they basically, good, good, in, in, in the quality? That I want to state on, on the actual aspect of that. They are accessible from a front door standpoint, uh, and a sidewalk standpoint, because the divide sidewalks, I've really brought some things that all the requirements. Uh, I can say like the raccoons wouldn't have traditional ADA grab bars, uh, or things of that nature. Uh, that can speak to the purpose, that was the question, everything up there in our, our designing, uh, process and on the side. It's similar, not at all, they need wide doors, um, but certainly, though, one here through, uh, the glory of the vertical of all the chicks. And if, if, if there's still in the open, that means just a, um, a possible workaround for possibly, you know, all three units are. Occupied and you were fine as home, um, they were fine sentence, but, uh. They found as an acceptable, uh, risk, as a thing, but wanted to apply any unit. If the, uh, doorways are wide enough, um, they couldn't apply the grab bars, that they would say, okay, here you go, let's just put the bars in and now. You can use the, the bathroom or even, um. Because I understand, like, creating that is at the right height, you know, just how that could end up becoming a little bit of a burden. You, you have for, for someone that you're proceeding in the future, but if you were to have doorways that. That were applicable for someone in that condition, then, um, if you made, uh, even basically, you were accommodating someone, if you. This, if you've been, but, um, if, if, if the plan is not done, it's perfect. That's everything.
Thank you, uh, I don't have any questions, but perhaps you did this project two times in your past, uh, like you mentioned. Uh, we'll say thank you for being willing to take input, um, and make changes, uh, thank you for removing that. Parking lot that required people to drive over the sidewalk to get to the parking lot. Um, I think that was a big take from there, so I appreciate you guys taking the time to, to readjust the play with that. Uh, on the forward stage, there's something wishing, you know, that's a lot.
President Harrison.
Thank you. Very strongly excited that this project is participating in the city's affordable housing program. Uh, technically only eight units, but in fact, it would be affordable for our residents, for the fact that. Uh, this project will yield forty one units, and our residents, um, will not be cost burdened to residing in. And to have more of a modern style feel, and it's like. I just wanted to say that, thank you for that consideration, and boy, and then. What do you see for that consideration? I have a question regarding the community center, um, that will be housed on lot one, is that right?
I'm sorry, I've cut that part off.
Oh, that's okay, I was trying to figure it out, but.
So, with the rendering you have here, on, on the first plan, then that, the community centers, intersection, number of, uh, lot. About the first floor, the, about fifteen hundred square foot stays overall, that'll have, uh, a large area. And it'll have a secondary room, which right now, we've set it up to get relaxed, um. It will be two restrooms, small kitchen, and like a kitchenette, that edition makes it a little bit bigger than that. There will be, uh, at least one management office, um, this one will be on premises, um. Out of management of, of the, the facilities, and then a little bit of cement there as well, just started. Being paying on.
Okay. And this might be a question for Mr. Sanders, I'm not sure, um, how many people will be employed?
Great question. It's a great question, Mr. Sanders, I'm gonna say a few, three, but I believe it's one, or ten.
And I want to go back to the ADA accessibility, I wondered if any of the, uh, the community center and any of the other public shared spaces. And any of the buildings, if they will be ADA accessible, or have some of the. Uh, there are special features that the three ADA units will have?
Yeah, maybe some of the accessible, um, I have to check with my, that, find out how it's back in the finals, or. Probably not a project, a lot of the areas accessible as well. Much about kitchen, that is, that's, uh, council and laws and tensions about forward, lower, and down the ice, things like that, I'm not a hundred percent certain about that kitchen. Um, but, uh, the intent there would be five months accessibility and that's.
Okay, thank you, I don't have any other questions.
Okay, President Nichols.
The questions that I have are probably quickly directed to Mr. Sanders, so I can follow up with them.
Thank you, uh, President Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, me, it's like life comes full circle, because, A, Sean, the guys who was in front of us. And then the deal of the work on this project is, is making, um, do you know, uh, what, I mean, would, would they be built toward the J and E?
No, I'm not quite sure, I didn't, I didn't, I don't, I'm just, get that very far, I'm just, I'm a hundred percent certain of. If they're gonna bring a third party and that is changed, okay, um, by change, we can keep that information to provide that plus. Um, thank you, and then, there's maybe a question for, is there a benefit to the outside, it's up to the home family, I don't know, still, or that just looks negative? Um, well, I think it's, uh, definitely first that it's the health, it's giving the, um, roll, you know, the six year order there. Uh, but, you know, every, uh, each, we, we didn't have it before, and I'm sure, this is, um. And, uh, there's like, then each president, which, and, for, originally, there was space there, uh, for, there's a, there's a word. And, uh, club, in addition to having, probably, the, the, the environment, the, the, for, uh, it's a personal version on that. Absolutely, and then as far as having, I'm pretty much their own doorway, are they using key files? Or, 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 imagine, not traditional, you, we had. I've forgotten, uh, awesome, um, no further questions, you may should clean.
Again, if you mind going over in the accessible units, I think they're.
As far as where they are, or?
How many, how many, how many accessible and how many accessible?
Each, each of the first four units will be available, um, and I'll have it on the, um, and then there are, I believe, six. Full, accessible, um, or habitable, any, um, yes.
That's, okay, so, um, are there any other questions?
Chairman, so, we're, there's a question about the H and A, the, 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 I'm, I'm there, right? Thank you.
Thank you, um, and so I'll go ahead and recommend that we go down next episode session, you know, my hopping, Mr. Sanders, answer forward the answer to the question.
Mr. Sanders will absolutely be here, um, and, uh, yeah, we'll have it, for, for everything.
If so. And that concludes, uh, the business for the community, not without the committee.
Thank you very much, we will now move to the work of the Parks Recreation and the Recreation Committee. I will defer to our chair, Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you, President Bauer, amazing, really, again, uh, Mr. Chu, okay, with what the new resolution fifty twenty three, our records?
Resolution fifty twenty twenty three, resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter to a clash conservative agreement. With Skelly and Goby to assist the city of Harrisburg with the bidding process and construction. Engineering services for the base new parkway, group restoration project, along the Capitol area, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Chu, and there's all from administration, everything, um, it's like insert one more question, or, yeah. They should pull the, yeah, my two nature's law, just go, um. No, well, um, I think pull it more toward you, like, yes, yes, thank you, now, state your name for us, meaning your title. It's on the right of all, our best strategy. Um, I'm delighted to, it's, but, it won't, I, what would I do? So, um, I, I believe it was, um, um, we had a round of grants that you, you know, that's actually, that's actually. They all, you know, for all of you, but, and maybe, I'm right, all of this. Now, we have two questions, the bottom one, that we just tried to. Um, it was for very, 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 members. Um, working with, uh. At least, I think, over a decade, has been studying, like, um, for, inside, um, they talked, Scott, he's. Uh, they talked, Kelly, because. But it was four, almost two thousand dollars. So we have, um, the idea of finding this. However, the city to others that provides management. People city into the projects, and we're actually. Really, um, quite, much. For us to join, I said, I'm glad it's, it's long, but. Um, but the chief has, uh, over, as, thanks. We know, our, uh, not ran, this is only, this is the city center. It's ways to the problem. And a, on that topic, sort of land, the forest, I should agree, you know. Um, and the excellence in all of the time. Again, you know, that more, you guys, twice, the, 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 which, we pledged to post, or the policy. The price of, which, 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 you know, the, 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 the. Wow, I would love to. You might wanna leave it. There you go. We want, we want to, we want to make a question. You're excellent, what you do, I think, that's a good, thank you, again. Um, I just, I have one question for my fellow members that asked questions as well. And then first, the landlord would come up with a question for them too. Um, how much, you might have said, but how much of the is the grant worth this word, this insurance in the word? Which is.
For grant, we have, uh, two, so one was two. There was one in this, there are, this, this, there's one, and now, and, and. And this time, I should also ask. You want to place rent, this, I'm not. But there's a, this, this, this is. I have sources.
More than I'm, I'm, no, 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 understanding.
Oh, these were remarks.
I'm not, I just, I don't know why, yes. But, okay, right, this is starting to do the work, okay. I pointed to the shot, help them information in the city not put it towards any.
Um, to the two, it's the goal on there. One is for, you know, the last, for the, you know, that way, we can be required, because now. Um, that's what we're gonna get, this, now, don't, it's part of the, on the, hands, um, because we're doing the homework. Studying and writing, really, really. Um, so that's the grant, I mean, whether it's, who the first. This, 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 actually, getting, found you out, and that's.
Uh, now, that's what I leave, it's a clarification, oh, and thank you so much. I'm gonna start here to my far left, Councilman Rodriguez, do you have any question?
No question, we love coming, we can, and chair.
Thank you, we, we let you know. Um, Councilman David. Um, Councilman Adrian.
Thank you. Just one question on the, if I may please. So, all of that, um, the one in three, uh, thirty-five, that's all funded, and that was where, so it's not, it's not. Asking officials to hear.
Uh, no, that's, that's.
Sitting down, which was in, very far.
So many grants, uh, that's, you know, for six grants, you know. And their relationship, they're, they're, but I'll get to a definitive answer before the.
Okay, I think one of the people who covered, uh, one brought to state, so that, uh, Mr. Trump, uh. Apologize if they pay on, all right.
In some, and I'm gonna get words back, we can't, we can't, and we've got general sense in regards, so we can't hit it tonight. But the, um, consulting dollars will all be paid for by the D C R grant. So these things, the, and that money, of nine hundred thousand dollars as a match, with the D C R grant that we did in partnership with the City of Harrisburg, because it was more competitive, the city was, again, more likely to be selected for funding, through D C R funding. So the cost of the city, um, will, will, the only loss you might have is your own engineering inspections. If there's something that you need to give an additional, um. That on the work that's being done on the city that would properly, that's your own decision. And then that funding will have its own inspections, so in part of the nine hundred thousand dollars, they will have, uh, inspection terms that go along with.
Thank you, yeah, I just wanted to make sure those, still, the, the, for now, is.
Uh, and we greatly appreciate all the, all the support that City Council, we have raised, three point five million dollars for this project. The city contribution has been invaluable, it's thirty thousand dollars. We have been raised through state, um, private sources, and it's a very, very, um, expensive project with an old English trash. But, uh, most of what has happened in the city, it's a hundred years old. And we're, the first time ever gone through a major renovation in hundred years.
With the next which I'm involved involved. Sorry, we're um President Bowers.
Thank you. Thanks for clarifying. I was just curious about the terms of the agreement. Um, I think they're kind of open ended. I just wanted to know if what it.
So there's some. Power and it's a bit of a better. Kind of terms contract. This is on. Over that. As you probably recall, professional service contracts. Party. We did that thing specifically with more of our. Um, the city did not. We're not thinking of selling it in the end. That is for all the scale. So if you were starting with. So scalable is why we're able to locate no part. There's a couple of grants. What it's issue we have. Open any. And one of them is so one of this already. For one grant. Uh, it is not. Sign. And I'm a city. But. Not to go off. Probably. Um, but in the opening. So whether uh, we're getting. Abouters or I. Brand that will use. Uh, you just don't have a lot of things to have it. So.
Thank you for clarifying. I don't have any other questions.
Okay, thank you, President Bowers. Vice President.
Thank you. I don't have any questions for our guests.
Thank you. And Councilman Lawson.
Thank you. No question.
Thank you. Um. But well then, with no further questions that um, I will uh. Like for a resolution fifty of twenty twenty-three to be on next later in agenda three. And that goes into work for our. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to the work of the Works Committee. I'll refer to our Chair. Councilman Lawson.
Thank you, President Bowers. Uh, this would be Phil. Would you be, uh, this resolution answer? Resolution twenty-nine, twenty-three, a resolution ratifying the denim to the professional services agreement with uh, with engineering incorporated. To continue to provide services as the city engineer for the city. Thank you, Mr. Phil. It looks like we have a small army. Um, do we have anyone from the administration? Coming before us to present?
Excuse me, can you please speak into the microphone directly?
Better?
Yes, thank you.
Very much, please. Um, no, was. Good evening, how it is, buddy, down with uh, open dollar. Um, I believe they are. Paris and um. I'd like to give those. Go. Also listed on. Uh, all the discussions that we had before uh, only dog. Organizing information. That would be the council. I don't know the issues on work. Uh, hopefully. You hit some light. Some data. So that all sharing with Diane.
Thank you, David. Really appreciate the opportunity. But. Um, what we have here is. Approximately about. Four twenty-two. For a quarter of one. Three nine. That's a combination there in time level and also the financials. Right, so um, to pick it up, um, down with the chair. Really have a strong um, strong roots in the middle. Of the area. Uh, but it also is a multi-disciplinary firm. And uh, this allows dollars to provide certain. Under three primary contracts. The first is the contract for the interim city engineer. The second is the non-transportation engineering services contract. And then with the contract directly business plan. So first take a look at the twenty-twenty-two project installation. In twenty-twenty-two, we've done about thirty-four total projects. The total spend on the city was two hundred forty-two thousand, one hundred eighty dollars in exchange. With the majority of that being spent in engineering. And then uh, about forty-six thousand five hundred was spent on other projects. And we've died into a yes. So what you see here is the breakdown of the twenty-twenty-two engineering projects. With twenty-two contracts, total spend of hundred minus six. A thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars and some point. Uh, for the largest project at the bottom of the chart, somebody you're right. In the state street improvement project. But those twenty-twenty uh, two projects. Covered a variety of areas, including paint needs, uh, school and road safety. Directly rights and capital gateway, bridge. Taking a look at the other projects, there were twelve projects that have spent a forty-six thousand five hundred. Uh, we broke them down in the presentation, just to try to different area and public works, facilities, finance, planning. I really know covered from a big issue perspective. And facilities. And then um, just talking a little bit about the administrative. About seven percent of the total building was related to. And that really covers things like serving and consulting for the incentive for the city. Facilitating especially in the city of the state and then draft of both action. So before I move on, we can bring out a section of the presentation with the first quarter of twenty-twenty-three. Are there any questions?
There's, there's one. The percentage. The other. Engineer. Percentage.
So to follow up on your question regarding some of the percentages. Um, the. We. Not quite sure anything about some of this. But we go over that. Almost good. Uh, which is. Um, that the spend on engineering is about eighty percent of the spend. For the twenty-twenty-two projects.
Oh, that's so. So that we first.
So taking a look at. Three, the first quarter and um, the activity for Donald Engineering. The distribution here just shows that uh, the total bill is eighty-one thousand one hundred and ninety-four. Is the change and thus let out um, the majority of the spend between public works and engineers. Um, and that we brought out was uh, thirty-eight thousand nine. Public works and thirty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty-four uh, engineering. And then we have some other projects. That make the rest of the spend. So just taking a look at the engineering project. There were twelve projects. That included uh, that Donald Engineering worked on three seven thousand two hundred and eighty hours. They're online to provide and then you'll see that from a big picture perspective, they cover. Tunnel gateway, second. Version, water square. And state to state state improvements. Project we decided. And then the other projects, which include the publics for the project, publics, public works projects there by the facility parts and finances. Those were uh, two of my projects for a total of forty-three thousand nine hundred and seven dollars. And covered repaving, running, paving plans, land development. This is the evaluations. And that's been eleven percent of the total related to the ministry. That's a uh, high level review of. Of the uh, first quarter twenty-twenty-three spend. Any questions? On those projects with that spend? Uh, so you have. He says this of those.
Right, absolutely. Um, my name is Wes Eichler, uh, the project manager of the power. So the types of projects that we work on. And um, stretch from uh, moving foundation, evaluations on uh, buildings that have been formed out. The whole way up to the new land development plans for the public works. So we handle a wide range of stuff in the city. Um, we also get involved in. Aspect on the uh, engineering perspective. Um, in that we uh, are looking to protect the city's interest in infrastructure. By making sure that uh, where everything is. Or are doing properly. Right, uh, at the place they invented. Place and the. Any other brands of being placed uh, based on. So, so again, you know, very wide range of uh, responsibilities. As project manager, um, when it's one of the city has the need, one of uh, his way of surviving. Uh, personally, um. One of the city personnel comes to find that and say, I mean, it's very. Next one, see. Um, they come to the agency. Guys have the. This time work. That we don't have it in-house. We have some consultants that are part of our roster and definitely. And so um, at that one. Do the work. Um, typically, it goes to me step by step process. Uh, with whoever's requesting work. Uh, we identify a stove. And then we do some, some idea of what we expect. To extend as part of that. So, uh, great on the outline. Whoever's requesting work has some idea of what we think we can do and how it's. And then at that point, they can make. Ask whether they want to have a stove. And I mean, so whether they think they're spending too much, whether they. Whether. Whether the work. Um, least done.
Yeah, my question was. And just basically that in terms of style and complexity, the thirty-nine project. Of the twenty-twenty-three comparable to the twenty-twenty-four project.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yeah, the, the, the scope of the projects that we get involved with. Um, I think consistent um, in twenty-twenty-two and ten for the first quarter of twenty-twenty-four, yeah. Um, we're, we're not changing. Um, the first quarter, which is private, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. We were more than. Uh, I've been bored in this.
Right, there is more in the book. And so um, we did, we worked on a variety. There are some that um, aren't really worthy of high lineups, but in the meantime, we weren't able to go into the detail. Did like to make them then. Uh, and then have said, okay, so maybe those, if you have any questions, we're. Able to answer those.
Okay, great.
Then from, from my own interpretation, um, what we're talking about today, what we've been presenting, this is what we would be. Expecting a, a city employed engineer to handle. Which is what we're discussing, right? Not, not the entire scope of what we're working. On, just on the uh. From the supporting.
So at, at the beginning. This would cover. First contract. Um, there are um, funds. Also sending ten parts. Uh, but that's a little more specialized. Um, so no. So. I think.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure. I knew that we had something. Notating here that was outside of the um, interim engineer, you know, agreement. I just wanted to make sure that I didn't. I missed the.
Oh, wow. I'm. I'm pleased to be very happy. People who have like. Boss.
Okay. This one. The one ninety-six. Seven minutes. Slaughter. Works with you as a consultant and, and uh, interim engineer, correct? That's, that's why. That's why I was doing the beginning is wanting to ensure that I were completely just. Understand. You know. This. Part of it in some of the news with the. But I just want to get a sense of where we're at. What does the um, search or the city here locally add on today? Uh, currently got. Compared into the background right now and hope that our. Definitely. And then you were uh, perceived that we would still need to have a continued agreement. Um, had been written on that new uh, engineer for, I guess. I, it's even on the foreseeable future. Uh, within this year's uh, budget. How would I be for of something? That's, that's everything that I have as far as the question can. Didn't, 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 didn't take one of most of that. Month here in full bill to uh. By the Dean Council. How the woman. Off wrong.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening to you all, Mr. For me, you know, I don't.
Vice President.
Thank you. I have a few questions. Um. A couple. Uh, I'll start with one of these projections. So um, for the first quarter of twenty-twenty-three, that will march. April, May, or June, not for dinner. When I made it a great question from our calendar here and now we're just hearing from us through March. And then we can have um, say, of course. Thank you for that. Uh, and then this will be for a project which is outlined here, both under the engineering project and under the other project. They're all part of. What would we cover in the contract with friends? They wouldn't be. Like so chances, I don't know, just wouldn't be part of. Um, the non-transporting engineer or any of the other projects and so will be members that will be paid out of this.
Um, so I believe, I think we'll see that they're, they're.
Yeah, from talking. You taking care of it.
All hundred to the city and you understand.
Okay, so, all right, that went on, you know, how much you spent specifically on city engineer. So that's something um, I'm not going to ask you how much you spent for the dollar on, on the same engineering. And when the number is always the most used, yet which is how much we expect in the past when we add in house engineer. Um, not just the dollars, but also the contract. So uh, we're making sure I have any numbers for. That's all I have.
Thank you. If we are just looking for the vibes and clarification, how we advise here, so what we advise members. We discussed this resolution, resolution twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-three. During a work session that we had on March twenty-first of two thousand and twenty-three. Um, at that time, councilwoman was required about Donald's contract at work. Uh, vertically, the job description of a city engineer. So thank you for sharing this report and this information. I think it's helpful. In. I guess giving a better idea of sort of what we're still missing with the mansion. Um, city engineer or after. Um. We did receive the job description. I think that's circulating that maybe some of the first perspective candidates responded to uh, via email last week. So I just wanted to know if we do. That information you want compared to. Share this evening. I just have a few questions. Mister Hyde, are you still the point of contact regardless for distributed fairway or any question? Okay, I was expecting, it's nice to see you. I was expecting until we're signing around some region events. So, so you are still the point of. Thank you. Uh, this, this agreement expires on December thirty-first of two thousand and three, if I'm reading that correct. Or do you anticipate once the city engineer, any of these applicants move forward? That the agreement may certainly prior to the end of the year?
So I, I think morality is, that's exactly what you want with an incoming engineer. How long do you need assistance levels at this level? Does it, so goes through the. Based on service by, how much service does a moving engineer require?
That's fine. I just wanted to clarify, clarify the terms of the agreements. Um, and my other question regarding this, also this city engineer search was already asked me to, so thank you.
Councilman Major, any question? Uh, and you uh, has. Correct. You're already. This, the question that I have is um. Given what the expenses were so for twenty-twenty-two. Uh. Brother. Go see the wall, you know. Um. The one fifty. But um. There's shout. Here's one point three given first quarter expenses, they're already at eight thousand. Or never insert on the. The role of. Right. Part of the reality. So I don't want to say that I'm. What it now had to. So I think, I think we would better perceive that. Lost in connection that, I think that's, I think that's not the problem. Okay, uh, or no further question then? We're able to. Maybe no further question. Um, Councilman Dan.
That's so much a question. I would like a little bit more um. And by the instruction and give us a sense of what's happening when. Are we looking for. Is our goal just to have. So we think it's like kind of, you know, every time this time comes up. We have to have this same conversation over and over. It's not really looking at once. Uh, whereas if we're taking them for longer services and we know there's a more way, but. What, what, what we definitely have. For that, and so I would like it. Some. Communicate some vision of what they. How they.
Well, it was, it was always the goal for us to hire a well, in-house engineer. Who just. Had a candidate that fell through, as you all know, and we've been searching. Every sentence for one. And we finally got the candidates that we have in the background now and then. Hopefully, everything works out.
And. I'm. Well, and um, I uh. Suppose we. Heard this over the door later. And that will be the work of the public.
Thank you. Thank you. We will now open the floor for public comment, just with the housekeeping notes. Please state your name and address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live. You'll have two minutes to share your comments. Mr. Trindale served at ours on the first. I'll begin to my right. Is there anyone else that'd like to offer public comment? Okay, so you can hear no one. Anyone in the middle section? See, you can hear no one. Anyone spell out? Okay.
And President, this is.
Okay.
Yes, thank you very much, um, President. Um, this is just a point of clarification. Uh, we'd like you to ask that the uh, city council please provide the records questions. Um. In um, an email to the administration of the Mr. Hartman. Um, administration will pass your questions on to the appropriate department directors tomorrow. And um, we will attempt to answer your questions in writing. And finally, as fashion, as the, in these department directors will be pleased. We just want to make sure every um, piece of information you wish to have entered properly. Um, we, we make sure through our call room. And so I appreciate your tolerance to me asking. Additional case that we just have uh, good questions and uh, email format and will answer them properly. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Pam Hour. I'm one pretty more behind you. And I just wanted to comfort you, I'm all here. Um, for asking the ADA questions, it's your first week. I didn't want to come tonight, but I'm so grateful. Because it really shouldn't, that you guys are scared when you talk about wanting to know more about the ADA and care about. Um, the accessible units. I'm very, very grateful because there's so many of my brothers and sisters stuck in nursing homes. Um, because there's not enough accessible for the units out there. So here more coming online. Very encouraging that I've managed to meet the need to ask this question. They're great. And it's, uh, thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember is the time is seven twenty-six P M. I will entertain a motion surgeon. Is there a second? We stay in the gym. Thank you, everyone.